Okay, we're going to call the Board of Selectmen's financial meeting to order. If you'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands where it stands, one nation, indivisible, free, and justice for all.
Thank you. Evening, everybody. We do have three selectmen in the room, myself, Susan Bransfield, and we have Jim Tripp and Rick Shar.
And Mike Pelton.
Visiting us remotely is Mike Pelton, as well as Ralph Zamponi. Lou Pear is by audio, and Mike Hernandez is also, I think, by audio. Is that correct, Mike?
Correct, Susan.
Thank you, thank you. We have some guests with us tonight as well. Kristi Carpino will be speaking, and we also have the chairman of our Clean Energy Task Force, Mr. Andy Bauer, who will also be giving us some information. So with that, we're going to get started. My intent is to be efficient in this meeting. As everyone knows, we had a terrific storm in our community yesterday, and I want to make a special thank you to all of our neighbors, our residents, all of our employees, our fire department, all of our volunteers. They have done a tremendous yeoman's person's job of bringing our community to a state of most roads being open due to Eversource not being able to take care of many downed wires. We still have some roads that are not open. I did receive a memorandum before this meeting from our Director of Public Works, Bob Shea, and I'll just highlight it quickly. He points out that the town crews cleared large trees and debris for over 100 roads in Portland. We have a total of 174 roads in the town, so out of 174, 100 roads were worked on. Most had a very large amount of debris. Over 65 roads, as of last night at 9:00, were blocked. Crews were able to work through the night to clear those roads that did not have any downed electrical wires associated with the trees. Currently, we have 10 roads still blocked by trees because Eversource has not cleared them. We, the Town of Portland, will continue to clear the debris that was pushed back to open the roads, which we expect the whole effort will take weeks in order to clean up. We have many scheduled projects coming up in our town. They include roadwork for chip ceiling as well as paving, so those are projects that we will be proceeding with as long as all of our roads and residents are safe. The debris will be picked up after the roadwork is done. Gildersleeve Road, which is a dead end and blocked by many wires and trees, will be cleared late tonight by Eversource, and all the trees will be removed by town crews by 6:00 a.m. Fire Department has responded to approximately 40 calls for service over the last 24 hours. We do have some critical infrastructure that's still out of power. Our chlorination plant has no power. The generator was fixed by our staff, and someday I'll tell you the story of how they had to do that, and I give them an incredible amount of credit for being able to get out to the chlorinator and make sure that it was safely accommodated. Metropolitan District Pit, there's no power to that. There's no power on Route 17. The Water Division is working with Metropolitan District Commission to supply the valve and doing their best. The town well has no power. The Highway Department Building, no power, generator running. Bartlett Street Water Pump Station, no power, generator is running. Co Avenue Sewer Pump Station, no power, the generator is running. Same for Indian Hill Sewer Pump Station, company number three, company number two. All of those have generators that are running them. The transfer station has no power. The scale for bulky waste is closed. We cannot take garbage, household waste, because the cans do not work. We're not able to crush and take care of them. Any of your brush that you have due to the storm can be brought to the transfer station. There will be no charge for that because of the storm. The selectmen will be speaking in a few minutes about whether they're going to do curbside pickup. Today, August 5th, there were 287 loads of brush that came into the transfer station and were accommodated. The high school, I want to thank the Board of Education sincerely for their assistance. The high school is open on generator power. It is open for cellphone charging for a cooling station, and you can go there between the hours of noon and 8:00 p.m. That is tonight, the 5th. We'll also be running it tomorrow, Thursday, August 6th, and Friday, August 7th. I do not know when power will be restored. Eversource is not able to fix any of our wires today. None of the downed wires were accommodated for by crews from the Eversource, so it will be days before power is restored. And again, I want to emphasize our thanks to all of those who are working so hard, and we will continue to meet all of the needs that we can. With that, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion?
No move.
Made by Jim, seconded by Rick Shar. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is approval of minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen for July 15, 2020. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Made by Jim Tripp. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rick Shar. Any changes, errors, or omissions? I see Ralph speaking, but I can't hear you, Ralph.
Yeah, I have a couple of things I just want to point out to correct in terms of what was, what I said. With regards to the complex, the last statement said the full opening of the park is targeted for the spring of 2021. We don't tend to say that some sort of a celebration or a full event would be set for spring of 2021, not the park opening itself. And in status and committee reports, when I was talking about the updates with regards to the school, I talked about the challenge with middle school is greater because the classes are larger. They're trying to avoid use a gym, and then said one option is have fewer periods per day but longer classes. I don't know, I think that's really with respect to the high school that was being spoke about, about the high school. So I may have rolled into the high school update and talked of the fewer periods per day. I don't know if that's being discussed at the middle school, so I just wanted to put down those comments on record so people were clear.
Is everyone in agreement with those suggested changes? Any other changes? So with those amendments, are we in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously for the amended minutes. Thank you. The next item is communications and correspondence, and we do have our state representative Kristi Carpino, who is here tonight to talk with us about one of our items on the agenda. Welcome, Kristi. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too, and your fellow members. I know it's been a rough couple of days, so I'm here on a positive note, I hope. I want to talk just for a brief moment on number 15 on your agenda, and for those who don't have it in front of them, and that's the Railroad Depot property. It's a project that Susan and I, we've worked on for a number of years, as has Riz and Lou and some of the other members here in different capacities, and it was something that we worked on in parallel to bringing the airline trail to fruition, and something we identified as a potential, if we could gain access to the Railroad Depot, which is currently held by DOT, as an opportunity to encourage tourism in the town and to expand on our recreational opportunities. And it's taken some, some time to get to this point, and we were finally able to have DOT present the town with the opportunity to obtain a temporary right of entry. When we entered the building a couple of years ago altogether, I think it was a very warm June morning, we had the opportunity to go in and look, there were some former interesting railroad materials still in there, but that is what is before you folks today. I hope you look upon it favorably since it is simply the opportunity to go in and explore, but I wanted to be able to give some context to some of the newer members who are with you now.
Thank you, Kristi. And I also want to thank you for your continuing work in assisting me personally, as well as the Town of Portland, in our recovery from this storm that was here yesterday. It is a big job, and we appreciate your assistance. We also want to recognize the great job you did in getting the USDA Farm-to-Family Program, which was quite magnificent, and we were able to get, I think, over 270 boxes distributed within our community of fresh fruits and vegetables. Ruth Mayo and the Food Bank helped with that, as well as many volunteers. Some of our selectmen were there. Jim Tripp helped out, as did Mike Pelton, and it was really a great opportunity to help families, Portland, Cromwell, I think Colchester and other towns. So thank you, Kristi, and we look forward to the possibility of doing this again in the fall. So thank you again. I want to ask if April Graves is available. She was planning to give us an update on racial equity, diversity, inclusion from her committee. Welcome, April.
Hi, Susan.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Portland Social Justice Coalition, I am happy to talk about all the great things happening around social justice initiatives in Portland since your last 40 minute meeting. First, we would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for pursuing training through Sustainable CT. Sustainable CT has a history of providing well-received training on social justice and equity issues. Another great initiative that has been started is work between Elizabeth McGee, a consultant mentor, who met with Susan Bransfield, Sharon Peters, and Captain Ron Malardo to start a dialogue between our schools, police, and our youth services department. The dialogue was focused on how we can have solid communication amongst our community's youth and parents, as well as police and youth services in our schools, beginning with Brownstone Intermediate School, the Middle School, and High School. Another focus of this will be on restorative justice concepts in schools and relationships between police and the community. Much of the focus of this coalition is community building and dialogue, so this goes along well with what we are trying to reach out for, to build relationships between members of our community and county officials, such as the Board of Selectmen, Board of Ed, schools, and police. We want to empower our community members to feel they can address their concerns to their local officials. Lastly, our coalition would like to thank Sharon Peters, the chairwoman of the Board of Ed, and Superintendent Dr. Britton for the productive phone calls we had with each of them this past week. We were able to establish a good beginning dialogue about our concerns and their concerns around equity and community dialogue. Together, we will be working towards having discussions around equity and how we can achieve it together. A very important aspect will be the reopening of schools and ensuring all students have equal access to technology and nutrition. The Board of Ed has included these aspects in the reopening plans, and the coalition will be supportive of any of the schools' needs in these areas. Our next coalition meeting will be next Thursday, August 13th, and all are welcome to attend. If anyone is interested in attending, please send your email to portlandsocialjustice@gmail.com to receive the Zoom link.
Thank you, April. Are there any other matters under communication and correspondence from our selectmen?
I have one, Susan.
Yes.
Okay. I have one that was written to me, and I think he had talked to you as well.
Yes.
This is from Frank Connolly.
Yes, thank you, Lou.
Okay. And he lives at Seven White Birch Bend in Portland.
Yep.
And he says, "Dear Lou, I would like to request that the Board of Selectmen revisit the topic they looked at a few years ago, decorative lighting of the Aragoni Bridge. The Pearl Harbor Bridge in New Haven is an award-winning bridge and is featured frequently on Channel 8. During the holiday season, it displays different arrays of lights. It is quite beautiful and very attractive. The Aragoni Bridge with decorative lighting would be spectacular. It currently is often featured on the weather segment of Channel 3 with the beautiful Connecticut River in the background. The Aragoni Bridge is, in my opinion, the most attractive bridge in Connecticut. If it were to be illuminated at night with different colors, it would be breathtaking. It certainly would promote both Portland and Middletown. Every time I travel on Route 9 at night, both northbound and southbound, I picture what it could look like. The recent widespread usage of LED lighting has dramatically lowered the electric cost for lighting. Perhaps some of the costs could even be offset by fewer lights that illuminate the traffic and the travel portion. Currently, the bridge is undergoing major repairs. I suggest that Portland reach out to both Middletown and the state on this idea. Several construction projects are coming in under budget due to the less traffic due to the virus. In addition to the recent good construction weather, perhaps if we, if there were a budget surplus, it could be redirected and install these types of lighting. From an economic development point of view, the dramatic increase in Portland visibility would be, would complement the town's current economic activity with the redevelopment of the former Elm Press property and the possibility of riverfront restaurant on the site of the oil tanks. These assets, in addition to the Brownstone Park with its extensive advertising program, could be a major plus for the town. Hopefully, the board will consider a revisit of this proposal. I think it will really put Portland on the map. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Signed, Frank B. Connolly."
Excuse me, I just have to take a call. I'll be right back. Yes. I'm sorry, I had a call on storm-related questions, so we're all set with that. Thank you, Lou, and we'll open it up for maybe a brief comment from the selectmen.
I'm not.
Jim?
I'm not overly familiar with the proposal from a few years ago or the discussion that took place, but I'm not sure whether it would be time to get it in place with construction. Usually, projects take a long time in the planning, but I mean, I'll just look at it in the future.
I did contact the State Department of Transportation official that is working on the project, and he indicated he would send it to his design group for their comment, and I will bring back those comments to you, perhaps, I hope, by the next time we meet, if we can take it to the next step, if you wish.
Susan, I have a question.
Rick?
So, because it's not in our budget, is it something we could, we would have to wait till the next budget?
I don't contemplate at all that, that we would be recommending this for the town to take on. This is something that the state of Connecticut would have to take on.
Okay.
So I would not recommend that we do that. One of the, in fact, one of the stumbling blocks the last time, Rick, was that the Town of Portland's Board of Selectmen at the time did not want to pay for the electricity that those lights would, would incur, the money, and they said no. The city of Middletown was very interested in putting up the LED lights, and while the expense is not nearly as much as it would be for the traditional lights, there's still an expense, and the towns in Middletown and Portland would have to take that on. That was the arrangement the time before. And the installation, again, the city of Middletown, and I know that we went to the state legislature and the Transportation Committee listened to our request, and they were not able to fulfill the request. They did not have the money, and at that time, they were doing the work on the bridge that was on the main span, the arches. While they listened to us, they were not able to budget it, so it could be something that can be asked again, certainly. And it's something that, you know, with Kristi, I could ask her if she could also look into, perhaps, getting, getting some input on that thought. So I will bring that back to the next meeting. Are there any other questions, comments? The bridge that Frank Connolly refers to is gorgeous, and I have seen it lit at night and at different times of the year, and I concur. It is quite a spectacular bridge in the city of New Haven.
Thanks, Ralph. I have one more thing to say, Susan, if possible.
Yes, of course.
Just a point of information, I was in Farmington the other day, and when you go over the bridge that goes over the Farmington River, not as large as the Aragoni Bridge, but there were some beautiful vintage lighting fixtures on the bridge. If the, you know, maybe it can't be done right away, maybe this is something that Kristi could take, you know, at least look into. Vintage lighting would look even better. And then a few years ago, if I'm not mistaken, I think, I think Mary Dickinson, myself, Deanna Rhodes, and one other person, we went to Windsor Locks because we were in a study on attractiveness of a community, and we were working with Windsor Locks, and Windsor Locks was working with Portland as sister towns. And one of the things that the University of Connecticut was trying to uncover was that what makes a community attractive and welcoming, and also, not only welcoming, but it invites businesses and community development and economic development. And in doing so, the people from Windsor Locks were able to tell what they thought Portland needed, and the people from Portland were able to tell the people from Windsor Locks what they thought they needed. So in each, each situation, we entered the, entered the towns from the entry points within the towns. For example, the people from Windsor Locks went over the bridge, they came from Glassenberry, and then they came from East Hampton to see what is the welcoming-ness of the communities. So I think what Frank is saying here is that, is there a way, and of course, you know, if the finances, if the burden of the finances is the Town of Portland, well, then, you know, that's a difficult situation. But if the state could help us out, and they can do something to make Portland more attractive so that it would be beneficial for the economic development of the communities, both Middletown and Portland, I think that would be a win-win for everybody. So I, I support Frank in his effort, and I know Frank's on the beautification of Main Street, and that's an important part that people are working on to make it better. So I, too, know that we can't spend money that we don't have, but at the same time, I was in East Hampton today, and I saw a new bridge that was put in there, and it was put on there by the state, and it's a beautiful bridge. So I'm wondering if there's a way in which, you know, Senator Needleman and Representative Carpino could go to the DOT and see, is there a way that this can be done and look into it? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I will work on that and bring back some answers for us.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome. Thank you, and thank you to Frank. We also had a question that had come in to us in an email, and it had to do with compost at our transfer station, and a year or two ago, we were able to accommodate and help a farm, a local farm, to get compost. Our employees at the time were able to actually use the town loader, and they put from the town loader the compost into the farming family's truck. Over time, our staff have indicated two things. One is there might be, and there likely is, some liability associated with the use of town equipment with a private company's truck. And number two, we are limiting, at the present time, our interaction due to COVID-19 with the public. We want to stress that the compost is very much available in the quantity that is requested by a farm or by a member of our community. However, at this point, our policy is that the private person has to get the compost, him or herself, and put it in their truck or their vehicle. If the selectmen want to comment on that or make a change, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Susan? Okay, go ahead.
Rick Shar?
Leave it up to the individual to load themselves like it's like we've been doing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Lou, did you have a comment?
Susan?
Yes, Lou.
Okay, I just wanted to say a word about that. Several of the meetings that we've been attending focused on supporting the farms in town. And as, even though it may be somewhat of a liability, there's a liability on everything we do, I would think that it would be, since we've done this before, and it seemed like it worked out fine where the payloader just loaded the pickup truck. It's true, there could be some liability situations, but there's liability in everything that we do. I would think that this is a situation that maybe, you know, once or twice during the course of a year, it's supporting a local farm. I think it would be okay to, to do it and help these people out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Susan?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe given what Lou said, maybe if, if we were to load it, that the individual that's having their truck loaded signed some sort of waiver.
Provided, and I will stress, right now, because of COVID-19 and the amount of business that we have at the transfer station, it is extremely difficult for our employees to take time away from servicing all of the customers and giving attention to one individual or one business. So while this may be something that can occur, during this period of time, I can't in good, in good conscience, really, say that our employees have the ability to take that time to do that, but I certainly will continue that discussion with the Public Works Director, so that once we get so that once we get through this COVID-19 and there's a little less frequency of customers. Our transfer station, as I pointed out a few minutes ago, had 287 loads of brush come into the facility today alone. It is extremely.
With one employee there.
With one employee there, yes. Thank you, Rick. You were there today.
Three times. And that man, I don't think he stopped for lunch. I mean, he was going every time I was.
Yes, he's very busy. He does a does a wonderful job for us, along with one other individual. He often is taking the materials to the other facility, facilities that we have to take our materials. So there's not always one, two people there. It's typically one person. So it is something, I I concur, we certainly like to help our farms. But with your permission and agreement, we will hold on that for the time being. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, that's that makes sense. And I understand the, you know, we have several things happening right now. One, we have a storm situation. And then the other part is COVID-19. So this may be a tough year to do that.
To explore and and proceed with. Are there any other communications and correspondence tonight? If not, what comment? Is there public comment tonight, Kevin? Not at this time, thank you. The next item, I want to call your attention to number seven, racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. And as we agreed a few meetings ago, that will be on our agenda every time we meet. This is something that Portland takes it takes very seriously. And I want to thank April Graves for the great report she gave tonight. And I'll leave opportunity for the selectmen to make any further comments at this time. If there are no further comments, again, I want to thank April and the work she's doing, along with many other citizens in our town. And I encourage the selectmen to revisit the emails that were sent that entail trainings that are available through Sustainable CT. And there will be others coming as well. The next item is water and sewer infrastructure. And again, a very important topic that I've asked our chairman of the subcommittee, Jim Tripp, to highlight the activities of our subcommittee. Jim?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Yeah, we had, we've had a couple of meetings recently of the the subcommittee. We had one last week, last two, a week ago, yesterday, in fact. And we, a couple of items, I think, that hit the highlights on that. First of all, there are some projects moving forward that Bob Shay and the team are implementing. For example, the installation of some new meter reading equipment. Part of this is looking at how we overall change the, you know, the cost model and things that we can do more efficiently. This equipment will allow meters to be read remotely, especially as those meters are get get more deeply propagated in the field. That shows promise, but the the new equipment seems to be working better. They are working and doing some training with that. Another, I think, note that was interesting is approximately, these were the reports, and Bob reported to us that approximately 6 million more gallons of water was used in June 2020 than in June 2019. I know seeing on, you know, Facebook that, you know, some of the bills people saw, and they were a little bit higher, and part of that is describing that as some higher usage. Specifically, a couple of reasons that we suspect for that had to do with, one, the weather this year has been much warmer than we've had. So there's definitely been more watering of lawns and just more need for that. And there's also with folks home, I think, that a lot of swimming pools being installed and and things of that nature. But also the fact that just the fact that people are home more, which means that, as one of my friends put it, they're flushing their own toilet instead of the toilet where they work. So but definitely seeing an impact on that. It actually was a measurable impact on our bill for MDC and the budgeted items. Probably one of the, one of the items that is most important to us, from what we see, is again, it goes to how do we change the cost model? As everybody knows, we've been seeing double-digit increases coming from MDC year over year for the last few years. As a matter of fact, I believe we're over 40% in the last three years is our increase in water costs from the MDC. We are locked and getting towards the tail end of a 30-year contract, but we're locked into it. We have to continue to buy a minimum of 146 million gallons a year. That's our minimum take, and it's a take-or-pay contract. So what we're working very hard to do is to make sure that we are positioned when this contract is up, where we have our own water sources that we can have online. And that that will be a significant shift, I think, in our cost model that can help us. To that effect, there was a proposal that was brought to us to take a look at and drill a couple of test wells on town-owned property in Wangonk Meadows. It's located in an area where there's a known aquifer in that area that produces good water. We do have the wells at Strong's Avenue. Those wells would have to be re-permitted, reactivated. But those had iron manganese in them, which means that the long-term, over the long-term operation of those wells, we would always have to treat for that condition. In this case, the proposal that came and the discussion has been to drill a couple of test wells on a piece of town-owned property that actually would be located in a decent area for us to be able to interconnect into our water system. And if we can find clean water, then the long-term operation of those wells would would result in hopefully less treatment of that water. There is a proposal that was kind of brought out. We have a sort of a ROM estimate of what it would cost. But really, the next steps for that would be to go out to bid. The process at this point would be to put together a bid spec, to send that out for bid, get the appropriate bids in. And then the next step would be to evaluate, award, and allocate the money that to actually go through with that, with the drilling. We have identified, based on the ROM estimate, an existing funding source from a project that had some, I believe, some capital, some capital, you know, funds in it that would allow us to proceed with this. So we know we can have a funding source to proceed. This is a project that has been endorsed in a letter from the Water and Sewer Commission, which we received. And at our meeting on Tuesday, the vote of the subcommittee was to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we that we authorize going out to bid for the drilling of these test wells, specifically to get the to get the ball moving. We all know that, and one of the concerns we have is that we're sitting now with about five years left on this contract. And there's a lot of work that has to get done. So while five years can seem like a lot of time, in terms of bringing the water source online and getting it permitted, getting the infrastructure in place, it's not that long a time. So we definitely want to keep this moving. So that's the report from the subcommittee.
Is the subcommittee ready or maybe at the next meeting to make a motion that we proceed with authorizing us to go out to bid for this project?
I would say that the the subcommittee was unanimous, recommends that we do it. I'd say that we would be ready to make a motion tonight if we can entertain that.
I'd make that motion.
Can you repeat it for us, Ralph, please?
I'd make the motion that we we give the town permission to to seek bids on on doing test wells down on the Fairgrounds area for possible use as a water source. Right? That sounds all right, right? Did I?
Yes, you called the Fairgrounds, but same, it's the technically the Wangonk Meadows, the town-owned land, not the exchange club land. But I would second that.
Further discussion? We we would proceed with town staff to look into this and certainly bring it back to the full board, as well as the subcommittee, before we take action. But we'll bring it back to, start with your subcommittee, Jim, and then proceed to the full board. So with that, I'll entertain a vote unless there's further discussion. Any further discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item, budget reports. You will have a budget report in your boxes. And if you would like, certainly come to Town Hall and call us ahead of time. And we'll make arrangements to get you your reports. I I also put on here COVID-19. We're not ready to give you the full accounting because we are incurring expenditures, both in the town side as well as the Board of Ed's side. And as time goes on, we'll have a better report for you. But I did want to bring your attention to the fact that Tom Robinson, our finance director, along with Bob Shay and Stephanie Fragola within the Board of Education, are working on reimbursement from federal as well as state grants. So they're working very diligently on that. And we'll be able to give you a better understanding of that at a future meeting. I suspect as a as a short aside, that with this disaster that the governor has declared and Portland also declared a disaster, which we are allowed to do, there will likely and hopefully be reimbursement for the expenditures associated with all of the work that our crews are putting in in terms of overtime, as well as the work at the at the transfer station. And I did want to bring up, when we mentioned the transfer station under the budget report, that if the board decides that they would like us to pursue doing some curbside pickup of the brush associated with the storm, I need your authorization to do that because that is not in the Public Works budget. You would have to take that from contingency, which I would anticipate we would have. And as I said a couple of minutes ago, I would hope that we would be able to apply for and get some reimbursement from either a FEMA grant or some other type of assistance for a disaster such as what we are experiencing. I've gotten a lot of calls on the brush, a lot of concerns on the debris. Many people are bringing their debris to the transfer station. We are not charging for that brush. It's totally unanticipated by our community. And I felt that it was fair to allow people to bring that in without charging. If you decide to go to the curbside, it would occur after the work that we have planned for our streets. The chip ceiling is starting, some of the paving that's going to be occurring on High Street. And some of the other pre-planned projects must occur within this summer season. So if we do this, it would be a period of time that our residents would have to wait before that debris would be picked up. So I just want to open that up and and get your permission and a motion to proceed with having curbside pickup if you so desire. Does anybody want to comment on that?
Yeah, I would say, first of all, I'm happy to make that motion. I think that, I think that there's obviously a lot of folks that are trying to clear debris right now. There's a lot of folks that it'll be difficult. They won't necessarily have the vehicles. I think the curbside pickup is a huge help to them to do that. Also recognizing the fact that the timing can be an issue. We've got a lot of work that's ongoing. So I think the way you laid it out, I have no problem supporting it, and I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Segmented by Rick Schar.
And I'd say I think it's the right thing to do because not everybody has a pickup truck. And not every, you know, most people are busy with their jobs. So this would give them time to clean up their yards over the next several weekends. And and, you know, if they don't have a vehicle, they don't have to schlep to the to the transfer station. They can just pile it up out front. I I think it's very fair and right to do.
Thank you. Knowing that we will incur additional expense for that. Because not only is there staff time, fuel, and other types of extraneous and miscellaneous expenditures, but we also have to dispose of it. And as you know, the disposal, as Bob Shay has pointed out, is costly. So and I would encourage that this be from our residents. It's it's certainly something that we want to serve our residents on, so.
Well, also, you say we we may be able to get some reimbursement?
I hope so, but I, you know, I don't, I don't want to guarantee, right?
All right.
But well, as you know, we're very diligent about doing our best to get whatever reimbursement we can for such an endeavor. And I'm sure other cities and towns are going to be doing the same thing, but so. Further discussion on this?
Susan, what did, what does Bobby Shay say about this? What's his opinion?
Well, it's going to be more work for him, Mike, definitely.
I mean, does he have the time? Does he have the manpower?
He's, he will, of course, as he always says, he'll do what the selectmen ask him to do. But he said clearly, it will not be done right away because there is a concern that other projects have been planned.
All right, if we do approve this, my only recommendation is that something goes into the River East, given them dates of like, you know, that they know, that they're aware, the community is aware that it might not get done till some mid-September at some point.
Okay, that's fair.
All right.
And I'll work with Bob Shay on that.
Okay.
Good point, Mike. Thank you. Any other comments? If not?
I would say, I would say I, you know, I support it as well. I mean, it is a challenge with everything else going on. And the concern I would have is, and there's no way around it, is that things, you know, piles will sit for a long time on the edge of curbs. But I don't know any other way around it, but that's just what comes with it.
Yes, that will occur, as Mike pointed out and as you pointed out, Ralph, that will occur. They're not, it's not going to be picked up right away. And we have incurred this in other storms as well. But the understanding is that some of our property owners simply don't have the ability, either physical or vehicle-wise, to get that, those things to the transfer station.
I think too, Susan, if people know that it's, you know, maybe going to be a month or two, a lot of them will make it, may just be encouraged to take it on their own and get it to the transfer station. I mean, I saw people at the transfer station today coming in smaller cars and small SUVs with just barrels of.
Wow.
Stuff and dumping it, you know? Not everybody was coming in with a pickup truck. I I think a lot of people will just take it on themselves to get get it there. But it's, if somebody's elderly or just, you know, it's really impossible for them. Maybe they're physically compromised to know that the town will at least pick it up on a certain window of time. I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to be picking it up forever. It's going to be a certain window, I would think.
Yes, and we will announce that in the River East and on our website. So those dates are clear. Thank you. Are you ready for the vote on the motion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is the Water Pollution Control Facility, grit classifier housing body replacement. This is a project that requires a a waiver of the bid requirements because if we don't proceed, we would have to have a whole new foundation associated with this mechanism at the at the Water Pollution Control Facility. And I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Water Pollution Control Facility has a grit classifier housing body that is 22 years old, and it runs daily to remove grit from the waste system. And whereas numerous repairs have been made to the housing, and now the grit classifier housing body is failing and is in need of replacement. And whereas the grid classifier housing body needs to be fit into a unit that is secured to an engineered foundation consisting of special mounting fixtures that were assembled as part of the original building. And whereas replacement of the grit classifier housing body includes adapting housing to other pumps and devices that exist and are located to fit the existing piping. And whereas the purchase of another grit class of grit classifier housing body would require foundation work to the Water Pollution Control Facility, as well as require replacement to other components of the functioning system. And whereas Custer's Water of Spartansburg, South Carolina, 29304, has the same grit classifier housing body that will fit in the same location and operate within the current system for a cost of approximately $23,850. and operate within the current system for a cost of approximately $23,850. Now therefore be it resolved that in the best interest of the town, pursuant to Section 1208, Section 7 of the Portland Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby waives the bidding requirements of Section 1208 of the Charter as it pertains to the purchase of the required components to replace the grit classifier housing body for the Water Pollution Control Facility from Custer's Water. In addition, the Board of Selectmen authorizes the First Selectwoman Susan S. Bransfield to act on behalf of the Town of Portland to enter into any and all agreements. So I'll open that up for discussion and the possibility of moving the resolution.
So I have a question.
Sure, Rick.
Are we buying, this is a secondhand unit? Is that, or is it?
I don't think it's secondhand.
Okay, I was just.
Where do you see that?
No, it doesn't say that. I'm just, just sort of was, the way I'm looking at the wording in it, the same grit classifier housing body, I just was, I'm just asking, is it, is it a new unit?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so it's, it's new and this?
But it's a certain size that has to fit into this foundation. And if you get another kind of grit classifier, it probably wouldn't fit.
Okay.
So you'd have to rebuild the foundation. That's why it seems that it's the best interest of our town that we waive the bidding and go with the one that fits.
Then is Custer's Water, they're the manufacturer or the distributor of that?
Yes.
Okay.
They have the housing body that will fit in the same location and operate within the current system. And it's an item that costs $23,850. And it's something that's very necessary in that our staff are having to do some manual work, and this would allow them to not have to do that.
Yeah, I was going to say that, you know, it sounds like, you know, a good amount of analysis was done to make it, you know, this seemed to be the most sensible move to make. I know that it was probably over two years ago at this point now that we had a tour of the entire facilities, and there's certainly lots of work that needs to be done. And so it's good to see something being put forward to make sure we could soundly make a good judgment in terms of maybe being tight with the funds because we certainly need to use them in the direction of other components as well there. So I support this.
Thank you, Ralph.
Yeah, I kind of, I fall into the same category. It basically gives us a matching housing so we can reuse a lot of the infrastructure that's already there and repair the part that needs to be repaired. So to that effect, I would make a motion to, to approve this as submitted on the resolution dated August 5th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rick Shar. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item is an item that we have talked about a few times at our selectmen's meeting, and that's the Shared Clean Energy Facilities Request for Proposal. We have a request, this is also a waiver of the bid requirements because we are, we are working with who we believe, Robert Klee, as well as Alan Sabins, who have been working with us on this project. They are both highly qualified people. And what they are looking to do is to provide professional legal representation and clean energy technical consulting assistance to develop and deploy a shared clean energy facility request for proposals. So while they're not providing us with the actual material, they are providing us with the legal representation and energy consulting in order for us to go out for a request for proposal. The legal firm of Klee Sustainability Advisors of Woodbridge, Connecticut, would provide the legal specialized professional services and representation. With the Technical Clean Energy Consultant CSW Energy, they both would represent the town in connection with drafting and disseminating a shared clean energy facility request for proposals for the town to lease property, such as the town landfill at 39 Sand Hill Road to a qualified solar developer to site and install one or more of these shared clean energy facilities, solar generating projects. And whereas Klee Sustainability with Technical Clean Energy Consultant CSW would continue as the town's legal counsel and the owner's representative for the entire life cycle of any shared clean energy facility solar generating project that moves forward beyond the request for proposal process. Whereas the town will not be responsible for any legal fees or any technical fees. Rather, all of the fees to Klee Sustainability Advisors and CSW Energy would be paid for by the qualified solar developer. For legal services, they would receive three cents per watt based on the total installed solar capacity. The technical services, which is CSW, there's an error there, that should read CSW, the typo, of seven cents per watt based on the total installed solar capacity. And whereas Klee and CSW have significant specialized experience in the programs and matters described above, and they can provide valuable expertise to the town, we feel that it's in the best interest of the town pursuant to Section 1208, Section 7 of the Charter, to waive the bidding requirements as it pertains to utilizing Klee and CSW for technical energy consultation services related to shared clean energy facility request for proposal and implementation of any winning proposal. In addition, the Board authorizes the First Selectwoman Susan S. Bransfield to act on behalf of the town to enter into any and all agreements with Klee and/or CSW related to the facilitation of the shared clean energy facility request for proposal described above and the implementation of the winning proposal. The contract or the agreement was shared with our town attorney, Martha Kalina. They are in agreement with it. And I also had shared it with the selectmen previously a few weeks ago. We also have Andy Bauer here to answer any questions from the Clean Energy Task Force. Andy, did you want to start?
Are you asking me to ask a question of myself?
No, I didn't know if you wanted to perhaps make a comment.
No, I'm sorry. Long day. No, I think you summed it up quite nicely. If I might add though, the nature of the Array Financing Program for which we are applying is called SKEF, Shared Clean Energy Financing. And one aspect of that financing mechanism allows us to disseminate the electricity to Portland residents, they would have an option to buy the electricity from this array at a discounted rate. So that, when we first heard that, that certainly got the attention of everybody who was in those initial meetings. And that would be kind of a cool thing for the low and middle income households in Portland.
So Andy, this is Ralph. I have a question for you because I know you always do your homework. So I'm sure there was other companies that, you know, looking at the same type of, you know, providing the same type of services. So how did this stock up against other companies you may have seen offering similar type offers to help with the town expanding on their clean energy and usage of solar?
Right. There's, to sum it up, there seems to be a ballpark and they're right in it.
That's, that was my main concern, that we're not having a situation where we don't know what other ones are offering and, you know, it could be a higher number. But if you've, you know, looked at it from that standpoint, that's good. Thanks.
Yeah, welcome.
Andy, this is Rick. Can you explain how, how the, kind of the finances work on this? Like what, the town gives the land and then these guys here from Klee sort of set it up? I don't understand how it works. Can you just maybe explain it in layman's terms?
Yeah.
And exposure financially to the town?
First thing, first thing, Rick, is that the, by the way, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, good. The town will not, doesn't give the land, the town leases the land. So we retain ownership, you know, we're looking at the landfill. But if it was another property, we would retain ownership of that property and allow the array to be built. And the, the financing of this is going to come from an entity that has a whole lot of money, probably some kind of bank. Because a 2-megawatt array is going to cost a substantial amount of money. Portland doesn't, doesn't have to do any of that. The financier is going to take care of that. And Portland will receive lease payments on an annual basis because we are allowing our landfill to host this array. Portland will also receive taxes from that array as well. We don't have any definitive numbers, but I would say conservatively that Portland, you know, based upon other arrays of this size, of this nature, Portland could expect to receive in excess of $20,000 on a yearly basis. We'll know much more when we get some initial studies back. And the nice thing about the nature of this agreement is if, there's, there's going to come a time where we have to make a decision to go forward and then we're committed. And that is not this time. We will make that commitment, I should say, the Board of Selectmen will make that commitment when we get more clearer numbers. How's that so far, Rick?
That's good.
Yeah.
The other thing I would add.
You're doing a good job, thank you.
I would add is that any lease arrangement has to go actually to a town meeting. So you're in no way committing to actually having a solar array on the landfill? But you are committing to having representation and exploration of the request for proposals. To write such a document is highly technical. Alan Sabins has worked with us through the Green Bank. The Green Bank, which is a quasi-governmental agency, has worked with them. I take that, CSW, working with them as a good reference from the Green Bank. And we're looking at the possibility of a solar array on the Brownstone Intermediate School. In addition, Robert Klee is highly respected in the field of solar energy, as well as clean energy in general. He was the Commissioner of the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection until Governor Lamont took office recently. I don't think, I don't remember if he worked for Governor Lamont, but he did work previously. So his legal knowledge, as well as his practical knowledge in this field, is renowned. I checked references with our Martha Kalina. And in fact, when I asked for a reference, they said that they had asked him to work with them, that they respect his work in the energy field and they felt that we were, we would be well-represented and that the agreement that was put forward by Klee Sustainability Advisors is very similar to a document that they had worked with in the past as well. So I think it's important to tell you this, that we have researched these firms. They do come highly recognized in the field. And I expect that we will be able to work with them as our advisors, recognizing, and they take a risk at this, that there needs to be a good proposal that comes forward, that the town agrees to, and that will meet the scrutiny of a town meeting and that we will proceed with. I also want to add that when we talked about our budget, I made a commitment that as for selectmen, I would look at finding alternative revenue sources for the town. And one of the things that I think is very important is that we utilize our resources that we have, not only getting property taxes, which this gives to us, but also that we get some revenue from a fallow, not being used property in our town. And as I talked with Bob Shea about this, he said that right now, all we do is we have to mow and maintain this property, but it doesn't give anything back. So retaining ownership, but leasing with the understanding that this, this may be a go, it may not. I mean, it's something that Klee is committing to reviewing for us legally and CSW is looking at from an energy consultant perspective, with the understanding that it may, as I said, it may be a go, it may not. And they will work closely with my office and certainly closely with our Clean Energy Task Force. And I would hope that the selectmen would take an interest in this as well and work with us as this proceeds.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve this resolution as presented this evening?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the, to approve the resolution as presented dated August.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike Pelton. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And if there's a selectman that's interested in, in working with us, some of you, I think, have sat in on some of the exploratory conversations. Please let me know and we'll make certain that you're part of it. I think this is a very endeavor, not only for our community monetarily, but also in keeping with our sustainability initiatives, as well as just good for the environment.
Great.
That, we're going to move on to Home Energy Solutions. And this is something that our esteemed Chairman of the Clean Energy Task Force, Andy Bauer, is going to talk to us about. Welcome again, Andy.
Thank you, Susan. A little bit of a background. Home Energy Solutions is a program which is administered by Eversource and conducted by home energy solution vendors throughout the state. Many of you, I know, have had an HES visit to homes. For those of you who haven't, essentially a team of professional building envelope, insulation technicians come at your home and essentially check it for weatherization. They spend about four hours there, excuse me, and will caulk windows, apply door sweeps, do any number of measures to make your house more weather tight. At the conclusion of that four hours, they sit down with the homeowner and they review what's, and they also make the homeowner aware of a whole series of rebates that the homeowner can use to, for example, get a more efficient refrigerator, clothes washer, dehumidifier, and insulation. The, the cost for an HES visit is approximately $99. However, during COVID, However, during COVID, that fee has been waived. Also, rebates have especially for insulation have literally skyrocketed. If you were to price out fiberglass insulation for your home, you'd find it between like a dollar and a dollar fifty per square foot. And you could apply, if you wanted to do this yourself, you could apply for a rebate after having an HES and you would receive 25 cents per square foot, which isn't bad, you know, it's like anywhere from one quarter to one sixth off the price. However, the rebate price now is $2.20. So if you're doing the math, the rebate covers your entire insulation if you're going with the fiberglass fiberglass insulation. If you're doing something else like vermiculite, I haven't priced out vermiculite lately, I think it's a little bit more. But again, people, anecdotally, I'm hearing from my Clean Energy Task Force colleagues around the state that they're having essentially nine percent of their insulation cost covered by this rebate, which expires December 31st of this year. So I put a little blurb in the River East for this a couple of weeks ago and just encouraging people to to contact the Eversource website where you can find a vendor. And the reason why I'm here tonight is because I bumped into Craig Frankel, who is the Principal of Lantern Energy. And previously, we have partnered with Lantern Energy to run HES campaigns. And I asked Craig if he'd be willing to do that again, and he said, sure, why not? And the key thing about this is because the task force would be advertising on behalf of the town to town residents to contact Lantern Energy and I have, I have very high regard for Lantern Energy. I've run two Solarize campaigns and two or three HES campaigns. And they're never problem free. They always, they do a lot of great things, but there's always little hiccups here and there. Whenever there's been any kind of an issue, I've contacted Craig and he is like, you know, contacted homeowners personally. And he's made things right. He's really a, an outstanding business person to work with. He's been very good to the town. So Craig has essentially offered to Portland that for every person who calls up and says, yeah, I heard about this from the task force, I heard about this from town, I saw a letter, whatever. Anybody who calls from Portland, Portland, Craig will rebate back to the town $50. And he has done this previously. And as a result, I think our, our Clean Energy Task Force Activities Fund, you know, at one point it was around $8,000, I think, just from previous HES rebates. So what I'm asking this board to do since Susan, I'm going to need you to chip in because I'm not exactly sure of how the board would do this, but if the board would allow Susan to craft a memorandum of understanding, an MOU between the town and Lantern, which specifies that, you know, the $50 figure that anybody in Portland who calls Lantern, Lantern will send us a check after, you know, December 31st and it would go to the Portland Activities Account. I specify that because I think it only fair if the Clean Energy Task Force is going to put an effort into generating this program that it not go to the general budget, but it goes specifically to the Clean Energy Program Activities Account. In the past, we've made offers of electric vehicle truck, charging stations. We've off, we've been able to fund, there was an energy efficiency makeover of the high school, middle school, I believe. And the the task force, you know, that's, that's a perfect place for these money to go. And then down to like small stuff, if we have like a solar array speaker come in, we might use it to buy refreshments for that evening. So those are just a couple of the the ways in which the task force sees as appropriate for you, for those funds to be disseminated.
Questions for Andy?
Actually, Sue, this is Mike. I have actually a comment to add out to what Andy said. Over the last couple of months, I've, my project during these COVID times is working with my brother, who does home energy audits for the state of Connecticut, has done for the last 11 years, and it is a fantastic program. It's one of those programs that if you've had a home energy audit, you know the value of it. And with the insulation discount that Andy talked about, virtually every customer that he sees that needs the insulation is getting it. And I think there's only been one customer in the last four weeks that's actually had to pay anything out of pocket based on the 220 per, you know, rebate. So it's been pretty amazing. It's a no brainer. It's almost too good to be true when they talked to the folks calling over the last week or so since the Eversource newest bill debacle. So it's been pretty amazing. It's a wonderful program. I couldn't recommend it anymore. And it's still well worthwhile. Anyone that has a home should do it. No question.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
If I, if my comment, Susan, and thank you, Mike, for those comments. Also, this is a non exclusive arrangement, you know, Craig Frankel has made clear that if somebody in Portland wants to go with another vendor, you know, that's fine if you have a personal connection or someone recommended. The the rebates are not through Lantern, they're through the HES program. Lantern is simply an HES vendor who's made this offer to Portland. So there's, you know, just to mention that and get that on the record.
Mike, did you want to make a motion that you authorize the town to proceed with an MOU with Craig? Is it Lantern? It's Lantern Energy.
Lantern Energy.
And Craig Frankel is the principal.
I would love to. I would love to. I'd like to make a motion to go into a partnership arrangement with Lantern Energy, Craig Frankel, Principal, to provide $50 per home energy audits or HES audits to homeowners between now and December 31st. That money going to the Portland Activities Fund.
Of the Clean Energy Task Force, right?
Of the Clean Energy Task, yes, correct.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Mr.
Lou Pear.
Oh, Lou Pear. Sorry, I didn't hear you. Lou Pear. Thank you. There's a few different ways of listening. So been made by Mr. Pelton, seconded by Mr. Pear. Further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen. The next item is a STEEP application, a Small Town Economic Assistance Program. It's something that is now available. We're looking at as a town to participate. And as soon as we get the topics, we will bring it to you. There are a variety of possibilities. The STEEP applications are not as lucrative as they had been in the past in terms of the grant. It's about $127,000 to $128,000 from the state. We would have to have a match for that program. Some of the things that we've talked about doing include some roadwork. We've also looked at some work within the water and sewer areas. We can look at sidewalks. There's a lot of different arenas. Certainly, the full Board of Selectmen understands a lot of the projects that you've been working on. And so I put it on this agenda to get your, simply to get your input. There's no commitment tonight, but I think it's important as we go forward with these grants that aren't stipulated on a particular topic that I hear back from the full board as to what you'd like to see. So if someone would like to start with some thoughts, we can do that.
I'll start having. I know that some of the work that we've talked about, for example, for roadwork, some of the ROM costs, looking at that, I'm not sure the STEEP grant would be sufficient for those, for really some of the more pressing issues. I think that, for example, the other project that would have been a potential candidate would have been the well drilling. But I think that given the sort of the criticality of that and the fact that we've got a very viable funding source already in place, I think that probably, I'm not, I'm not necessarily as worried about that one. I do look at the fact that we're looking and trying to figure out how we can continue the momentum we're making on sidewalks. And seeing what we have today in place that could be a potential match to a STEEP grant to continue some of the sidewalks and continue to push for some of the, some of the town sidewalks. I know we're going to continue looking at productivity grants for the Main Street sidewalks and continue to push those down as far as we can. But we do, if we can get that, sort of that inner core infrastructure for sidewalks and continue that, that would be very helpful as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Rick?
Yeah.
The I don't know, Bob Shea would be able to talk in more detail, but the Brownstone Avenue, the sewer.
Yes.
Jim, maybe you can help me on that, but I guess there's some serious work that needs to be done there and then potentially we'd have to redo the road.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's, if you don't mind, yeah, I'll, I'll add and jump.
Go ahead, you can.
No, that's exactly the project I was talking about is that there's, we have a water main that is not in good shape. We've had multiple breaks in that, in that main. And as part of fixing that, we then would also have to fix the road. It's out of location in town because of where it is, where it's located, it's a high pressure area. And it's subject to a lot of pressure gradients because of some of the usage down there. So that's something we need to address. The issue is that the ROM cost for that is significantly higher. It's actually, you know, sort of a, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like half a million or 400.
Yeah. But that is what I was thinking about. That is, that's something we need to figure out how we're.
We need to figure out how to do that.
That's an important project. Yes.
Absolutely. Any other discussion?
Sue, this is Lou again.
Yes.
I, I can support, you know, all of these things for, you know, the roadwork, the sidewalks and sewer and water. But I think the sewer and water really takes preference on any of the things that we're looking forward to do. 128,000 doesn't sound like it can reach the 500,000 or about that, what Rick was mentioning to, to take care of that issue, but that's an important issue to take care of. And if that 128 can be a portion of what the budget provides, then maybe that would be, I would prefer to do that first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Right, I will bring it back and hopefully we will have a proposal for you very soon. The next, number 14, is a annual 2020 Homeland Security Grant Program. It's an authorizing resolution to allow us to apply its dollars that Homeland Security makes available. And in order for us to access it, we do need a resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second. It's Ralph.
Seconded by Ralph, motion made by Jim Tripp, seconded by Ralph Sampaugh. Any discussion? This is a very small grant that we participate in with the Capital Region Council of Governments and the Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is the item that State Representative Christie Carpinho, Lou Pear and the Chairman of our Airline Trail Committee, Mr. Rosario Rizzo, have been involved with for actually a few years now. And that is the ability for us to at least get a temporary right of entry for the Railroad Depot Building. That's located on Route 66, Marlborough Street, right where is referred to as the hot dog stand. That, that iconic cart, hot dog truck and van that's there. Right next to it is a, is a historic depot building. We're not leasing it, we're not renting it, we're simply getting a temporary right of entry so that as a community, we can look at opportunities there that could lead to publicizing the airline trail, retaining a bit of history of that, of that railroad. And also, I think, an attractive place for people to enjoy when they are coming through the town. So there is a very simple review of the right of entry. And I, I would ask for a motion to approve the signing of this so that we can proceed with investigating whether this is something we want to go further with.
Okay, Susan, I will make a motion to go forward with this agreement to access the depot. And
Thank you, Lou. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Rick Shar. I want to thank Christie for working with us on this. I also want to thank the Department of Transportation, their Railroad Division that has been working with us. I think it's something that can be really a win for so many people. Any other comments, questions or discussions?
Just the comment that I remember going out there a couple of years ago when we started really talking about this in earnest. The building's in good shape. It's a good space for us to have. It's something I support.
Great.
I'll just comment that.
Yes, Rick.
History has a way of repeating itself because I remember many years ago, maybe in the 80s, when the State Airline Trail was being talked about. Portland at that time ended up declining, but this railroad building was going to be the terminus of our portion of the trail. And it's kind of interesting to me that now the possibility is coming back 35 years later.
Took us a little while, but.
It just took us a little while. Yeah. Right.
That's interesting. I, I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
Yeah, that was. I forgot what year it was. Maybe, maybe early 80s, but.
Wow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. And thanks to State Representative Carpinho. That's great. Next item is reentry committee. And we have Janet Nocheck to talk about the library. No, we don't have Janet. Oh. Okay. I'm sorry. So I will ask Janet to come to our next meeting to discuss. How about that? Because I, I don't feel, I'm sorry.
I was going to say.
There have been several different notices in the paper that kind of updates things, but if she can come to the next meeting, that would be helpful. And if she could continue to share the information with River East or online, so everybody knows what's happening, that'd be great.
Okay. I, I will add that it's, it is my philosophy that we are very conservative in our approach to the use of our buildings. We are minimizing the exposure of the COVID-19 to our employees as well as to our residents and customers that come into the town hall and to our facilities. We don't have depth of staff in our town. We have very few people that do a lot of work. And if one person is to contract COVID-19, it likely means the other person that they work closely with, if they have a partner in their, in their department, will also be sick. And that means I can't run that department. And I'll give an example. We have our IT department here. And there's two gentlemen in that department. And if we were to lose both of them, it would be very difficult to run. So we're being extremely careful. Everyone is wearing their masks and being compliant with using hand sanitizer and so forth. And Rick Shar is doing that tonight. And Rick Scharr is doing that tonight. And, you know, the library is looking at the possibility of making some hours available for browsing, but I'm cautioning, and I can still hear Mike Hernandez reminding us at the very beginning, we want to be careful. It's working, Connecticut is doing well, but it's doing well because of the functions and the activities that we are limiting ourselves to. And when we are involved, following all the protocols. And that's why I don't feel comfortable moving ahead with any changes until our director, Janet Nocheck, is able and available. Given the, the storm, I think she probably is involved and doesn't have any power at her home tonight, and she's unable to be with us. So let's reserve this for the next time we meet, if that's okay.
Yeah. Hey, I would, this is Ralph, I would add, I actually saw her at the charging station about five o'clock. She was dropping off one of the charging units they got at the library, the new units in terms of helping with charging. And she led, she brought it over to the school to, if they would make use of it. But we talked briefly and, and she did, you know, I asked her again about the different towns, and again, it, there's a wide variation across the towns on what they're doing in terms of what services they're providing. So it's still, still, there's no consensus with regards to what services are being offered. So across the libraries in the area, I mean. So, so, yeah, I, she, she was out of power as well because we talked about it, so I'm sure that's what impaired her being here tonight.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Susan.
Yes, Rick.
How, can you tell us how we're doing as a town, like from the, maybe with the public health people, as far as our infections? And are we staying, you know, very stable, or has there been any uptick as a result of what's happened in the rest of the country?
Very, very, very minor increases. There's still some positivity of the tests that come back, Rick. The last time I checked, we certainly were under the 1%, which is one of the, the bars that are looked at. And I was unable to get a report this past Monday. Our health director is on vacation, but he has been on all of our podcasts recently and has said that our community, and not just Portland, but the Chatham Health District is doing quite well. So things are good. They are good. Very good, Rick. As you all know, our schools are looking at their options as we approach September, and I encourage you all to visit their website and also to attend their town meetings. I believe they have one tomorrow night, Thursday night, which would be the 6th of August. And you can also, I think, review them because I think they're taped. So if you don't have power and you can't watch it tomorrow, you'll be able to view it later. There are so, I've gone to, I think, three of their meetings, and there are so many matters, considerations, aspects.
Yeah, it's tough. That is really tough.
Very tough. And it's, it remains to be seen how things proceed.
Yeah.
So with regards, so with regards to that, so as Susan said, tomorrow, what they're going to do is they've gone through and, we're trying to go through each school and have them have an opportunity to ask questions or have comments with regards to the opening strategy. And so tomorrow, between 5:00 and 6:30, they're going to do it for the parents for Gildersleeve and Valley View from 5:00 to 6:30, and then from 6:30 to 8:00, they're going to do it for the parents of the middle school. The intent is going, is at this point, is that they were going to be putting out a survey, they initially surveyed the parents, asked questions about their comfort levels with strategies with opening the school and how they felt about it. They're putting it out again this week, and this time, they're going to ask people really to answer the question of yes or no, do you believe you'd be sending your children back to school? Because they need to firm up the numbers. They're going to take those survey results, they're going to be presented at the, this weekly Tuesday meeting that we have for the reopening committee. And at that time, the superintendent's intent is to get a consensus from the reopening committee and what their thought is about what strategy to open with, that being either full opening, hybrid, where you have a mix of distance and in school, or full distancing learning. So he wants a consensus from the reopening committee, and then, I believe, on Tuesday night, he would present that information to the Board of Education, to look for the Board of Education, to make a final decision on what of the three methods of school in fall will look like. So that, that's kind of the, unless some, you know, I don't think anything's going to change from here to next Tuesday. Things, a lot of things change, but I think he was looking at trying to reach the final decision because they obviously have to do a lot of planning, additional planning. They've been doing lots of planning already, but additional planning that'll come into play as soon as that decision is locked into. So that is, that's kind of the schedule.
Ralph, I have a question.
I don't know. Go ahead.
If, if the schools do reopen, do they have a date in mind?
Well, the school, it's still, they did shift from the original date a couple, a few days, and the intent is to open on September 1st now. And they're going to use those other days now are going to be professional days with the teachers to make sure they're working with the teachers and they're prepared for that opening. So that was the slight shift in the schedule that they made. So it would be, intend to be opened on September 1st, and it would be of one of those three methods. So I guess the question I would ask is, you know, I don't know if anyone, you know, if anyone wants to comment on what their thoughts are, if they ain't, then you want me, as being a member of the reopening committee, you would want me to bring back to the reopening committee, but that will, on Tuesday, the decision, or the consensus from the committee on what they think of the three methods to be used will be presented, determined, I mean.
I would just say be as conservative and careful as possible on how things proceed. There, this is a very dangerous disease, and it's not to be taken lightly.
Yeah, I feel the same way. To me, we're, we're better off opening up in a more conservative pattern. And then as things progress, you can make the decision whether or not you'd want to try to put everyone back. I think they've already been a couple of places, you know, there's already a couple of districts that have opened up, and they saw within the first week, they started to see this disease jumping around. So I definitely think that a lot of good work is going into keeping us as, to do as well as we are right now. And I think it's, we should be conservative and try to maintain that.
I agree.
All right, thank you. The next item I put on for follow-up, in case there was any additional comments, I'm still working on this land swap and don't have anything to bring to you. I'm hopeful I will. Few things have gotten in the way.
Just a few.
Just a few. It's, but I, again, I don't want us to not have these on here in case there were any questions from you, but a few other, as I said, priorities have arisen that we've had to address that are crises. So we'll continue to review these. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions tonight? I believe we have none. We do have refunds of excess payments. I think I'll ask Jim Tripp to proceed.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we refund the amount of $201.37 to 42 Windsor Ave LLC.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, carries.
Aye.
Make a motion that we refund the amount of $163.64 to VW Credit Leasing LTD.
Seconding.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And make, make a motion that we refund the amount of $15.16 to Douglas A. Welch and Karen Welch.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And make a motion that we refund the amount of $83.20 to Robert J. Agalotti and Linda Agalotti.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And make a motion that we refund the amount of $1,871.13 to Connie L. Bauer.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
And make a motion that we refund the amount of $15 to Ludwig B. Stricharge Jr. and Donna Stricharge.
Seconding.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And make a motion that we refund the amounts of $692.75 and $106.58 to Larry J. Anoffrio and Catherine Anoffrio.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And make a motion that we refund the amount of $30.02 to Jeremina, Jeremiah Elsquire and Frank Squire.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And finally, make a motion that we refund the amount of $67.45 to Paula A. Brown.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Any status reports tonight? Ralph?
Yeah, the only thing I would update, I believe the necessary work that they had to do on Strickland Route 17 intersection was done today, and I haven't confirmed with Nick, but I believe that completes what they did. So they have moved the cone off of that intersection, so I will verify, but I think that signals that the intersection can be officially considered. I'll double check with Nick.
Which would mean the permit would be a final approval by the state DOT. It's an encroachment permit that they're reviewing. Thank you.
So I'll verify with him, but I, that's what it's looking to me.
Good, very good.
That's a big one.
Yes. Anything else?
The only other thing I'd say is that, obviously, we've talked about the splash pad, they were supposed to have Vortex, the company, out there this week. I don't know what, yet another problem this, with the storm has brought with that. And so the last I knew, we hadn't heard back from Vortex about their schedule, so unfortunately, the storm doesn't.
Anybody else?
Just, we were out looking at, you know, earlier this week, we were out looking at sidewalks, looking at where there's infrastructure. There's an effort that was done with a lot of folks that had donated in town to do, put some trees in and try to restore some shade, and there's a lot of effort going on right now to try to locate those trees and such that they won't impact the infrastructure and the new sidewalks that have been installed. So I say that, and aside from that, if you stand in an intersection with a stop sign and a clipboard, everybody comes to a complete stop before they go through. It was a good morning, so, anyway.
Any other reports tonight? Any informal discussion by the selectmen?
Only thing I'll add is, and this is just a food bank item, the food bank for the last several weeks has been doing distribution on Mondays from 4:00 to 6:00, and has been on Thursdays doing the, sort of their standard distribution in the morning, and there's been some deliveries being done to try to help get food where it needs to get without bringing everybody into congregate in one place. They're shifting that schedule a little bit, the Thursday is going to stay the same, and now shifting where it's going to become more of a standard call-in and, and a range either for deliveries to pick up on Monday morning as well, so.
Thank you for your service. And I know the Lions Club has been helping too. President Pelton and past president Tripp have been a big help to our food bank, as well as other members, so thank you. Is there any public comment, Kevin?
No additional public comment at this time.
Thank you. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, and it's 9:17 PM. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good evening.